Hey guys, you wouldn't believe what I've been doing for the last 25 minutes. I've been just talking to myself because I clicked the button and then something didn't work, so. Sorry about that you guys, that was dumb. Yeah, I'm really embarrassed. I uh, I clicked to go live. I clicked go live in one spot and it didn't go live in the other spot, so cheers to being live. Yeah, I'm not, I'm still not that used to streaming live on YouTube. You have to click go live in two different places. You have to do it in OBS and in YouTube. And you have to do it in a certain order. I think I did it in the opposite order. Anyway, here we are. Sorry for keeping you guys waiting. That was uh, really embarrassing. So here we are, we got a position. And um, what's going on here? This is a position from the book, uh, The Magnus Touch Chess Strategy on Chessable. So if you guys like Chessable and you have a couple bucks to spare, you could get this book. I think it's a pretty advanced book. I get more than half of them wrong all the time. And it's all about strategy. And someone was telling me a couple of months ago that they were having a hard time finding any material on strategy and I have to agree, there's not a lot, so. I think whenever there's a chance to learn some of that, you can just jump on it. So this is a good book. I recommend it. So what should the move be? I've already played a couple moves here. But um, I'm not exactly sure what the next one should be. King F3 looks like the obvious move, right? But after King F3, if they just play, for example, like Rookie 7 or Rookie 8, like what's going on here? They could even play Rook A4? Actually, Rook A4 is a bad move. Bishop B3. Rook takes A5. I don't know, maybe it's not that bad. But I'm just not that sold on, on King F3. I thought this was a simple position where you just play like Bishop takes C5, but I don't think it's actually that simple. You know, you're just gonna lose a piece with Bishop C5. So I guess I want Bishop C5 to happen, but under more favorable circumstances. I think it should be King F3. I'm just gonna play it. Oh man, you know, I even thought about this move. Magnus played Bishop B1 in the actual game, which was also one of our candidate moves. Okay, so. Now can I play Bishop C5? No, they take with check. Hmm, is it B4? No. Bishop B1 in this position doesn't look terrible either. It's kinda like, there's a big clamp. You can't move anything. But what happens if we play like Bishop B1, Knight B8? And then they're trying to play C4 in that position? Maybe it should be like King G3 in order to play Bishop takes C5. Rook takes E2, not check, and then Bishop takes D6. I think it's King G3. Maybe still King F3 also. I'm not sure which one's better, so I'm gonna try this one. Uh, it's King F1. Why King F1 though? I thought forward makes more sense, like we should, we should advance the king, use the king, endgame. I'm not sure what the difference is. Yeah, if they play, but if they play like King G3, C4, Bishop B1. Well, actually they play C4, we just take the Bishop on A7. So I don't think that makes sense. I'm not sure what the difference is here. Um, on Chessable you can also analyze the position like with a computer. So let's check this out. It'll be a weak computer, but we can at least see if there's a big difference right away. Hmm, okay, this is the wrong position. One second. So I'm gonna go back a move right here and then click Analysis Board. Do you guys still see it? Alright, it looks a little funny, but here we are. Alright. There's a very small difference between King F3. King F1. Yeah, so there's a very little difference between King F3 and King F1. So I'm, I'm, I still think that um, King F3 is a fine move here, so I'm gonna just take that as a as an L, but I feel like I got that right. What's up Vedant? Alright, so Grishuk gave back the extra pawn. How did Magnus finish the game? So we're looking for some kind of killer blow, right? Is it not Bishop C5, the, the same thing that I've been trying to get to go? Um, here's asking, how did I find this book on Chessable? Well, I go on Chessable every single day. I have a streak of, let me see. Check my streak. I have a 303 day streak. Coach Luis told me about Chessable 304 days ago. And I have been doing it every, every day since then, at least a little bit, even though I was like moving and everything. And so I pay attention to what books come out and at some point they they put out something saying, here's the new book. It's the Magnus Chess Strategy. And so I clicked on it, I looked at some like demo positions and I thought it was really good. Um, I think they showed a game where he played like Li Chao or someone and I thought that was a really nice game, so I went ahead and bought the book. But there's a lot of free content, which is also really nice. Womp. Got a little, little jumpy there. So Rook D2. And it just says like white's generally better. Let's see, if I play Bishop, oh, I forgot that the knight is guarding E7. Not my day. I'm like going live without being live. I'm sacrificing a rook for nothing. I mean a bishop for nothing. What is the world coming to? Am I right? Alright, so Bishop takes C5, Bishop takes C5 is guarding the rook on E7. So that's nothing. Maybe it's just Bishop E4, like pressure, but then they can play Rook D7. Maybe I just pressure more like this, but then Rook E3. So I think this first. And then this. And then, wait. Takes, 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 takes. Bishop B7, I think that should be good enough. Oh, he took with this one. Alright, if I play Bishop C6, he plays King E7. So I'm gonna play Bishop to B7. Oh man, why do I wanna take it with the rook instead of the bishop? I guess it's just more forceful? I feel like Bishop B7 is good. It's gotta be fine. Alright, let's just check it out and see. Oh, I, the wrong position again. Um, alright, so one move back, click the button. There we go. I can't believe I didn't go live at the right time. Alright, what's wrong with Bishop B7? Is this like a losing move or something? Wow, this is almost like squandering the advantage because I missed this obvious check, 95. The rook is hanging. That's ridiculous, okay. This is why I'm training, because I've been out of it for too long. It costs $39.99 right here? That's terrible. It didn't cost that much when I bought it. But 40 bucks for a chess book? That's really good. Like imagine if you were like doing fencing or something, or like rowing or some other sport where you have to buy like a million dollars worth of gear. 40 dollars for a chess book that you don't have to give back? That's pretty good. I don't think you should sweat it. Maybe if you like beg and plead with your mom, she'll let you. Oh, so this is the other variation. It doesn't even tell you like the stipulation. I think it's pretty obvious. Alright, that's what I wanted to do. And now, the ultimate move, B4. What, really? That wasn't the ultimate move? I thought it was the ultimate move. Am I a premium member on Chessable? Yes, I am. I donated my money to Chessable because I thought what they were doing was really great. And that makes me pro. Pro on Chessable. Although apparently not very pro in real life right now. Been worrying too much about things like how to set up furniture, not thinking about my chess. It's terrible. How the mighty have fallen. So B4 is an alternative move. Like what could be stronger than this? Just like King E4? Yeah, King E4. And the king is doing the YMCA? We love it. Is it worth it? Yes, I think it's worth it. But if you haven't finished all the free content on Chessable, maybe you could hold off a little bit because there's a lot of free stuff too. I, I think I finished like almost every free book on Chessable. And it didn't take me that long. So there's, there's a lot to learn. Um, but actually, some of the books are made by people who are like not that great at writing or chess. So the quality's a little bit eh, if you're not paying for it, the free books are a little dicey. I think this book is high quality. That's, that's why I'm doing it for myself. It's not just a flex that I can afford a 40 dollar chess book. It's, I genuinely believe that Magnus' book is good. And even if you get like 90% of it wrong, I, I guarantee that you'll learn something if you approach it in the right way. Okay, so the book says that white has two bishops. But you have to play in the best way to take advantage. And he played the strongest, most principled continuation. Those are filler words. That didn't help me figure out what to do in the position, so it's time to just look at the moves. What do we do? So, the knight on C4 is about as strong as a bishop. But it's also kinda dominated by this bishop. Can't advance any further. We could check their king. But I don't see the, the merit exactly of just doing that. Seems like White's pieces are all doing pretty well, except maybe this knight on C3. I think the knight on C3 is the worst placed piece. And um, I could maybe invent some kinda way of improving it. Bishop H3 is check Vedant, that's right, but it takes the pressure off of C4. I, I'm not convinced that it's the best move. I think Knight A4 is the best move. With the idea of like Bishop C4, Pawn C4, Knight B6 check, something like that. And then the knight could fly in on D7, something like that. So I'm gonna try Knight A4. It was E4, okay. This was probably one of Judith Pogar's last games, because I think that um, I think Sam Shankland was the last person to play against Judith Pogar. And that game was around the same time, I think. Maybe a couple years later. Alright, so E4 opens the position so the bishops get stronger. I have a really hard time rationalizing these kinds of um, what's the word for it? I have a hard time balancing concrete and strategic vision. I can't really do both at the same time very well. I think I have to take this rook, so I don't lose my rook. And if I take with the knight, I can get it on D6 one day. Okay, so that wasn't so bad. Um, yeah, Sam Shankland actually did beat Judith Pogar. They played a BOGO Indian where Sam played Knight BD2. Instead of something more provocative and she kinda just ran out of steam. And Judith Pogar was a, a steamy chess player. She would go on the attack all the time, so. Usually when players like that run out of steam, it can be pretty depressing to keep playing. Alright, so Carlsen against Gashimov. Gashimov is playing with a hedgehog. Alright, I know a move to play since it's a hedgehog. You play A5 against a hedgehog. Alright, cool. Let's keep reading. Okay, there's no other interesting information, so maybe just Queen A5. Normal stuff. Okay. Hi Om, welcome. I haven't seen you in a long time, Mr. Om. I thought you commented on one of my YouTube videos, but when I clicked on it, it said that there was no such comment, so. My bad if I didn't get back to you, I couldn't find it. So what do we do here? They're doing some kind of desperate counter thrust with D5 to open up their rook on D8. I was thinking of Rook DC1, but maybe that's not the move de jour. Um, we, we could play sometime, but right now is probably not a good time since I'm still like taking care of a lot of stuff that's not chess right now. I just moved and everything, so. Too much chaos for me to play a match, but we could do something later on. See, what do we do here? I, I wanted to play Rook C1, but after Pawn takes C4, Pawn takes C4. Knight takes C4, Rook takes C4, Rook takes C4, Rook takes C4, Queen takes C4, we lose a piece because Queen D8 is not possible, Bishop D8 would happen. I think sacrificing the queen on C7 doesn't make any sense unfortunately. Because when you take on D5, it, it doesn't have any oomph, like you're not close enough to the seventh rank or something. Even if they just play Queen takes C2 back, you're not getting anything. Um, I'm curious about something different. What if you just play like C5? Can, can we play C5? Bishop takes is met by um, B4. But they could just play Bishop D6. Maybe it's like C5, Bishop C5, Rook C1. Yeah, ma- maybe Rook C1. But after C5, they might play Rook C5, right? After Rook takes, they might play Queen takes C5. In which case, I don't think we have a lot going on there. The idea of C5 is just to not like trade on D5, I guess. Maybe to play some more pawn advances like B4. Like Black's queen and rook would be useless if you could play C5 and B4. That'd be pretty nice. Not exactly like breakthrough, just like they can't do anything after that. Um, but they could still put their knight on C4. So maybe that doesn't solve anything. Queen takes A6 Vedant. But you might be onto something. Maybe, maybe it'll be important that we could take on A6 at some, at some time. You know, that deep pawn is pinned actually, so maybe we don't have to do anything right now. Maybe we can just improve the pieces. Like Rook C1 is just maybe an improving move. But then they could play um, Knight D3. But against Knight D3, we could take on D5. If they play Knight takes C1, we play Rook takes C7. If they play Rook takes C2, we play Rook takes C2. And they can't play Knight takes C1. Now Vedant, do you wanna take on A6 sometime after C5? But they already have like multiple ways of capturing it, right? Well, I guess Rook takes C5. And then Rook takes C5, then Queen takes C5, then Queen takes A6. That's what you're saying, right? It's opened a lot of lines. Opposite colored bishops. Our knight looks not so bad, but how about this B pawn? Are we really gonna run in with the B pawn now? Maybe we could play Rook B1 after that. Maybe, yeah, maybe that makes sense. But I think Rook C1 might make even more sense because they can't play Pawn takes C4 at all. So we're just threatening Pawn takes D5. I think it's even stronger, so I'm, I'm gonna play Rook C1. But we can check out C5 too. Alright, it was Rook C1. Rook C5 is trying some shenanigans by all appearances. After Pawn takes D5, Rook takes A5, Rook takes C8, they can't play Rook takes C8, they would lose the game. So maybe we should just take on D5 here. I think retreating looks sad, so I'm gonna play Pawn D5. Okay, cool. Alright, easy hedgehog puzzle. Maybe I'm just beginning to wake up. My chess brain is awakening after like two or three weeks of not doing any chess. Um, let's see. I always do a little bit every day, but not enough to stay in good form right now. Okay, so the white knight is under attack. Mr. Gashimov is giving Carlsen trouble. Um, the text is suggesting that our choice of where to put the knight depends on concrete variations. So we have to ask ourselves why Black has played E5. Yeah, why did Black play E5? Because they wanna take the knight on D4? Maybe because they want to open up their bishop, but the bishop was already open. So E5 might have some other ulterior motive. Cause they want their queen active? I guess E6 to E5 is opening up the queen. Looking at H3. Um, that's not a nice thing to say about your chess brain. Your chess brain is not a bunch of underscores. Not this time. So I guess our options are E2 and C2, because after Knight F3, E4, I don't see any cool way out of that double attack. It looks just boring. Um, I don't know how E5 could isolate the E and the G pawn. It's just not possible. Well, if they take on F4, if G takes, they're not isolated. And if E takes, they're not isolated. So it's not happening. My here, you're tilting in chess? Why? What, what's got you tilting at chess? That sounds crazy. I don't believe you. Now, if we play 92, it supports F4 more, but I don't think F4 needs more support. You know what? I know why they played E5. I am boldly declaring that I understand that they want this guy to move so they can play B5. Not B4, stop. B5, that's what they wanna do. So wherever we put the knight, we should put it in a square where it's better prepared to meet this move B5. So let's say we play Knight C2. That looks like the right way to go. Knight C2, B5, um. We could go to B4 and then D5, something like that. Knight C2, B5, um, A takes, A takes. Knight A3? Yeah, I think this is the best way. I don't see why 92 would happen. It's just too passive. Alright, so it's Knight C2. Oh yeah, Vedant, you had a, a surgery or something, right? I hope you're recovering well. Alright, I think I should take one pa- one pawn and then play this one. Boom. And the idea is to go capture Daddy the deep pawn, so we're gonna wreck the deep pawn with our knight and it's gonna be great. Alright, cool. So I think I got this one 100% right, so that's nice for a change. I'm waking up slowly. Okay, so Aronian played some experiment against Carlsen according to the book. This is move 15. And we're, this time we're on Aronian's side. This book doesn't always come on Carlsen's side, which is pretty cool. Um, sometimes books have a little too much of a like a religious feeling where they're like, this is ala kind, he's the best. Every move he played is the best. Play like ala kind, but sometimes uh, you know, the other guy's not bad either. Alright, so Black has set up a good pawn center, but has some weaknesses to attend to, according to the book. Center might come under fire, but there's also the double B pawn to worry about. So white needs to find a way to exploit Black pawn structure deficits. And Levon found the best move. What do you guys think the move is? Um, I don't know what the move is. I'm just gonna take a wild guess, but I wanna know what you guys have to say. Alakin does not look like Karpov. By the way, if you guys haven't seen it, there's this really funny video on my recommended video list where Spusky is imitating Karpov and he does like the most shameless impersonation. It's awesome. It was on BBC like 30 years ago. Vedant, I am drinking um, some what's it, what's it called? It's called Aha. And it's got water and electrolytes in it and nothing else. Rook FD1 looks like an obvious move to try to target this deep pawn, right? Makes sense. Um, but we're not threatening to win it. Like we play Rook FD1, they play like actually, what is Black's intention? So these are the weaknesses. Even Eddie could be a weakness maybe. Um, our worst placed pieces are the rooks and this bishop, I think. Our opponent wants to play what? That's what I don't know. What do they wanna do here? Maybe they wanna play B4. They wanna play B5 and B4. I don't know, maybe B5, B4 is not even that good. Like we just play A3. Alright, so I still don't know what they wanna play. Maybe they wanna play E4, but that gives up the D4 outpost, so I'm not that convinced. Maybe they want to do something very complicated like this. E4, Bishop G4, Bishop F3. In fact, if we play Rook FD1, won't they just play Bishop G4? And if we play F3, then that's a success because they get to improve their bishop's position incrementally. And we get a worse pawn structure. So I think Rook FD1 is not savvy. Maybe um, maybe we wanna play H3. To stop Bishop G4. A4, I think it's a very weakening move Vedant. If you play A4, it's gonna be a target for the rest of the game. It's already under attack twice. Like it just doesn't look good to play A4 to me. Plus that weakens the B4 square. Alright, here's what I don't know. Like let's, let's pretend we play a slow move. I don't know what the urgency is in this position. Let's say we play H3 and we're just saying, I don't want you to play Bishop G4. I'm gonna play Rook D1. If they play a move like Bishop C6 intending Knight F5, like how are we not? Are we winning? Is it happening? Alright, somebody gave a follow or something. Um, I have to apologize that I don't know how to use YouTube very well. I don't know who followed or Um, I have to apologize that I don't know how to use YouTube very well. I don't know who followed or subscribed, but you're a wonderful person, and I'm glad that you're enjoying it. I can read the chat though, that's, I know how to do that. Um, okay, so I think H three might be good, but after say Bishop C six, if I play Rook FD one and they play Knight of five, I have a strong feeling that D four is gonna just break through. I think I think it's H three, I'm gonna just try H three. Okay, it was wrong, it was A four apparently. So I thought A four was very weakening. So how do I rationalize this? So it says Aronian fixes the pawns of the current squares and prepares Knight B five. Okay, I just totally didn't get it. I thought A four would be a target. But instead it's an asset. Well, it's pretty normal to want to play Knight B five and then Knight takes D six, right? It's very normal to chase this bishop. So that's not shocking, it's just very committal to play A four. Um. It says that it's very hard for Black to meet Knight B five, because taking the knight on B five is not ideal, because you lose the bishop pair. And answering Knight B five with Bishop B eight is also not fun, because you can't kick the knight out. Um. Okay, I think it's just super concrete, like why A four is good. In fact, once this bishop goes away, Bishop B four looks really strong, and that's something that I've never actually done in my own game, so that was cool. And yeah, Vedant, you got it right, absolutely. Nice move. I thought it was a little rash. I think I judged it too harshly. Okay, so Levon Aronian has a great position against Magnus, his Rook on A seven is very good, and White is able to put pressure on Black with the best move, but I think he didn't find the best move in the game. So let's see if we can find Levon's best move. Levon sometimes chokes when there's a lot on the line, which is really sad, because he's a fantastic player. Um, my my instinct and my chess guru senses tell me that the move is C four, because it undermines E four and it uh might deflect the Rook from B eight. Just so we can see some more positions, I think I'm I'm gonna play C four. Alright, cool. That was by far the strongest move, no wonder I got it without too much effort. Alright, cool. So C four, it looks like he played it and then he took on D five. And we are looking for the toughest possible defense. So how do we make the best resistance is the question. I think the best resistance is probably with Knight C eight and Knight B six, or Knight D six. Oh Vedant, that's terrible news. I had no idea. Was it, was his wife um a chess player or just someone outside? The chess community? I'm just wondering if I know who it is. I think it has to be Knight C eight, like what else could be good here? Maybe Knight E eight. Ninety eight looks bad because the e pawn's hanging. Actually, the e pawn hanging seems like a really big deal, so we have to deal with that somehow. Yeah, it has to be Knight D six, we have to get the knight there. Because otherwise we're gonna lose the e pawn right away. We should at least try to win the D six, the D five pawn for it. Okay, so that was forced. Alright, and somehow from that that shenanigan, Magnus ended up up a piece. He's up a knight against a bishop. Rook on C seven is a beefcake. Knight on D six is hanging. Um, and some precise calculation had to happen, it looks like. So um, how do we do this? At any rate, um. Yeah, in response to what you guys are saying about uh Levon's loss, of course our hearts go out to him. Great chess player, and it's unfortunate when things like that happen to anyone. Okay, there's a lot of losing moves here for Black. Like, for example, Knight D E eight, Rook takes B seven. Should be losing. Knight F E eight doesn't look horrible. Because we might be bullying the Rook away, but after Rooks, Rook D seven, maybe it's still bad. Because they're threatening just Rook takes D six. Maybe we want to play Rook D eight first in that case? And if they play E seven, we can play Rook takes E seven, so that's not so bad. Maybe it's Rook D eight intending ninety eight. I'm gonna try that, I think that's important, but the Rook is already on an open file. So if we play Rook D eight and they play like Rook A one. And we play, I guess we could play Knight B five. Yeah, I don't think they're getting anything from that, so. Okay, so it's Knight F E eight in the first place. And it gives a line for Rook D eight, it says it's unclear what Black's next move is, and we're just totally tied down. I don't know, I thought it didn't look that bad. And here the game continued with Rook D seven and Rook A five, and then White had to struggle for a draw. Really? How is White struggling for a draw? Oh, it's cuz they're up a piece. Right, I forgot about that. So if you are up a piece, it doesn't matter if they give a Rook for for two knights, you're still going to have an extra Rook at the end. Extra exchange. Okay, so that was silly. Silly, silly, oh well. Just gotta get sharp again. Alright, so the text has a a hint, it says that you should consider whether or not you can improve a piece by moving the piece around, or if you should change the pawn structure to improve that piece. So here, it looks like White's pieces are all in really great spots. Like who can get better here? The D five pawn is a target, like Bishop and Knight are already putting the heat on, so that's nice. We can't really make our queen better, maybe that's the problem. Actually, what if we play like Queen B one and Queen A two? It doesn't really do anything. But hey, it's a place to put the queen, maybe. But then our Rook on E one is actually not doing that great. Vedant, I don't know what the pricing is for Chessable. I bought it three hundred and three days ago. I don't remember, and I try not to remember stuff like that. It makes me very sad when I spend a lot of money for things that are not the bare necessities in life. Um, but you can go check it out, like go click their button that says like Go Pro Now or whatever, and it'll tell you. It's not gonna like steal your soul cuz you looked at it. I wonder if I was recording in the beginning when I was just like uselessly talking to myself. Nope, guess not. Okay, I s- I still don't know what to do here. I guess they wanna play like Bishop E six. We could play like H three, Knight E G four, and hope they take it or something. They might play Knight C six. I don't know if it's good for us, like if they play Knight C six and we play Knight takes Pawn takes. I think that's not good for us, because um the C six pawn would be weak, but the D five pawn would become better. So I guess they really want to play Knight C six. Maybe it's time to go crazy and get a knight on B six. Aw man, I was wrong. I I did think about F three. Um, but I just wasn't that convinced, because then the D five pawn is not going to be the target anymore. I didn't think that was so good. Okay, so this is maybe trying to open the F file for the Rook. Or maybe just open the E five for the Rook. Depends on what they do. Okay, so that makes sense, trying to improve the rooks. I was trying to improve the minor pieces even more, even though the rooks were not doing great. Okay, let's see. So this one against Grishuk again. Um. Black is actually doing fine in this position according to the text, um, but there is a a best practical try. This is probably part of why there are not that many books on chess strategy, because it's very hard to pick objective examples where there's one clearly best move. But that doesn't make them less instructive or interesting, so. It's not important that there's one move that's stronger than the rest. To learn something. Um, I remember that I thought when I saw this game before that Rook B one was putting pressure, but it's really not. So maybe it should be like Queen B three. Not Queen B three, Rook takes A one. I'm not doing so awesome today. Um, I might wrap up and go to sleep pretty soon, but anyway, let's let's finish at least this one. What's the big challenge? Maybe it's C five. To get D six in, like we play C five, Bishop C five, um Bishop C five, Pawn C five, D six. And we have active play. Or maybe it's, hmm, I think it's C five. Yep, okay. Alright guys, I think I'm actually gonna call it here. I've already made several faux pas tonight, and I'm gonna try to cut my, cut my losses and embarrassment. But it was good, maybe I'll do more of this uh tomorrow or something, just because I wanna redeem myself for not going live on time. Um, I'll put something in my Discord if I am doing another session. And otherwise, I will see you guys next week. Feel free to join the Discord if you guys are interested and not already there. And this book is really great. I'm not gonna show you guys the whole book, but I think you guys would definitely benefit by doing at least a few examples from it. It's worth forty bucks. Alright guys, I'm going to hopefully find the way of going offline right now, so take care everyone. Hope to see you again.